Before we open the meeting, I'd like to stand and have an invocation and pledge of allegiance. If we can bow on an attitude of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for the night of rest and Lord, just thank you for this beautiful day in Washington County. Thank you for the opportunity to serve others and serve our community. Lord bless us, direct us, guide us. Use us for thy service. May we honor and please you in all that we do and say, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Bible, the United States of America, and to the Republic where Washington stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning again. Welcome to our July 25th, 2023 meeting. Open the meeting. I call for approval of, we have the minutes of both June, did I miss? June 27th and July 11th. Guess we'll do them one at a time because I know there's, with vacations and some absences.
One of them, I'm trying to remember the dates that I.
You missed the June. I'll motion for June, June minutes to be approved.
Okay, motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor by saying aye?
Abstain. Okay. I was abstained for last week's, so.
Okay, so four, four oh one, the first one, the July 11th minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to approve July 11th. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained?
All abstain.
Okay.
Abstain, yeah.
Three, two, or three and two abstains, it's two. Moving right along then, commissioners' reports and comments.
Good morning. Good morning. I was, I was away last week, but it was good to be back. Did catch up on a few things. Got to attend several, me, Derek, I think Jeff, yeah, Jeff, paramedic graduation class, the first one from Training Center. And HCC partnered with that and Dr. Klobber. It was, I'll tell you what, it was, it was a nice event. We graduated 11 paramedics, which we need desperately. And, you know, I wish them all the best of luck and congratulations and hoping they hang around Washington County for a while. We need you. Got to go to the Ag Center, the Ag Expo last week. I got a couple of kids there. It always bothered me about buying something from them. So the market sales night, I managed to get me three rabbits and a turkey. So I'm not sure what I'm gonna do with them yet. I gave them back actually, you know, just something about buying them and then letting them process and me eating them after, you know, pay a lot of money for a turkey. I can go to Martin's and do better than that, I think. But that was for the kids and I tell you what, they put on a nice show down there. If anybody's never been to the market sale, it's a, it's an event that's, you know, it's fairly short, a couple hours, but it's worth going to. Watch everybody bid on these kids as animals they've raised. Then it goes, the money goes back to the kids. Congratulations Karen Dickey for your retirement. We had, she had a nice luncheon for Karen. I think Friday is Rich Eichelberger's last day for permit director. And if I missed anybody, I apologize, but that's all I have.
Okay, Derek?
Okay.
Jump around here today.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, Randy had a good time out at the Ag Expo and fair and I'll just pile on on that part real quick. It's amazing to see the influx of all the trailers and people coming in with all of their different animals, their horses and their cows and cattle and sheep and everything. Starting Friday night when the, they could start delivering those at 4:00 PM. And all the work that goes into it, the 4H kids and, and the moms and dads shepherding their family and their kids and all these animals. One, one family, I think it was Misty Meadows, they brought 34 animals in, okay? They had a lot of hauls in with all the different animals. But thanks to the Ag Board and the 4H people and all the volunteers, the people that volunteer for the parking, the people that, you know, teachers and retired folks that are judging the 4H baskets and the cakes and things. Market bidding, the market for the animals, you weren't there for the bake sale. I saw cakes being bid $260 and more for cakes.
So what do you think a turkey went for, buddy?
Too many crickets, okay? And then, and then my kids, we won a couple times, three times, but demolition derby, tractor pulls and all that. If you don't go, you're missing out on a lot of fun.
Which cake did you buy?
I always buy my daughter's apple pie at home, okay?
Pay for that dearly, right?
So anyways, great. And, you know, just a lot of volunteer effort makes that happen. So, and a lot of planning and organizing, so. Just so many things like that happen all the time and I'm always impressed by the effort here. Now, looking forward to this Saturday, I'd just like to highlight one thing. And at 11 o'clock Saturday morning, it's gonna be the 70th anniversary of the ceasefire in the Korean War. And, and, you know, Washington County had, you know, sacrifices in that conflict, those that were killed and those that were, were wounded and we're gonna have some folks that served in that war from the first day of the, the war through their first year at present. And I'm gonna drive down there with my 1953 Korean War M-53 weapons carrier, you know, and park it there. And I'm looking forward to that event to honor those people and commemorate that. Thirdly, I'll just highlight that the elder group, which is a group that advocates for seniors and assists with housing and information sharing and gets out and delivers lots of food, week in and week out, delivering meals, providing meals, home visits. They do a, a lot of the direct services in some ways that the Commission on Aging does, but they do it in a different way and they don't do all the Medicare advising and they don't have a fitness center. But they do a lot and I'd just like to thank Pastor Smith of Zion Baptist Church and Charles Peak and Teresa Peak, Teresa Peak, who actually run the elder group. And at the forum on Saturday, this past Saturday, we had Secretary Keller and Delegate Bruce Grossman and, you know, former NAACP Washington County Chapter Fred Chavis, as well as the new NAACP President here for our county and others. So it was a very good forum discussing the, the challenges and opportunities in improving senior care in our county. And then lastly, you know, we got Rich Eichelberger who's departing and, you know, Karen Dickey left. But we also have a new arrival, Bob McCoy, who starts this week as the new Director of the 911 Center. And so we wish him the best in, in, you know, bringing his leadership and professional skills to improving that important operation. And so with that, thank you, President Barr.
Thank you. Mr. Keever?
Yeah, thank you. I, as Commissioner Wagner was, I was out for an extended period of time on vacation. And I did not get to attend the Ag Fair, but I saw lots of pictures online from my, from my fellow commissioners. And I've always enjoyed attending the Ag Fair. If you like food, animals, growing vegetables, derby riding, there's something for everyone. It's a good wholesome event. I'm glad we can do that here in Washington County. Thanks to those on the Ag Fair Board who put that together, who volunteer their time for it. And even though I was away, I was able to respond to numerous emails or phone calls. Thanks to county staff for taking care of those concerns for me. And I apologize to anyone I may have called at four o'clock in the morning. I was in a different time zone and I didn't realize it, so. But thanks for your patience with me. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Klein?
Good morning, everyone. I too attended the Ag Expo several nights and the market fair. And I have two young ladies, the Yop family, who I've bought rabbits before, two years in a row. This year, instead of doing the actual bid, I went back, contributed to their breeding of their rabbits. And they were very good at marketing. I received at least two letters and a keychain. The name of their organization, their business, On the Pike Meat Pen Buyer. So there's a, forgive the plug, but once again, On the Pike Meat Pen Buyer. So please do business with them. But young ladies, I've, I've actually looked 20 years down the road. They'll be there as volunteers at the Ag Expo theirself. I too attended the paramedic graduation. It was the first class to graduate, collaboration with our new Training Center, HCC. One of the big things that HCC partnered with us, they offered those 11 graduates 41 credits for a total of $7,000 in value if they complete the other 19 or so required for their associate's degree. So nice incentive. Proud of those people getting to be their paramedics in our community. I also attended the reenactment in Funkstown a week or two ago. They had a pretty good turnout despite Gettysburg being the week before. And they're telling me next year will be even bigger. So thanks to the town for promoting and presenting the Civil War Battle, reenactment of Battle of Funkstown. And I do want to congratulate Karen Dickey and Rich Eichelberger publicly too for their retirement and their service. And the other thing, I've been getting a lot of phone calls over the last several months about several cable companies either trenching or digging up lines and contractors not performing well. So I guess we should have the public there, any concerns. You can contact me, we'll forward. But I think it's from Todd Moser, Scott Stottlemyre and Permits Department, people who are handing that to make sure that they're following all the rules. Or if you have concerns, you're welcome to contact any of the commissioners on that because there doesn't seem to be a lot of advanced knowledge. These companies are showing up, don't work and people don't realize they have a small easement, but they don't have the right to go into the entire yard and leave equipment. So we'll work those things out. But if you're listening to the public, if you tell them to contact the commissioners, we'll mitigate and help solve some of that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Appreciate it. The one thing that wasn't mentioned is last night was the monthly Merrill Municipal League Dinner Meeting. Thanks to the town of Williamsport hosted that, had a very nice evening, music, entertainment, small business meeting and a terrific meal. So hats off to Williamsport. They did, they did a fine job last night. Also, we've all talked about the Ag Center. It is probably the premier event for our community throughout the year. And appreciate it more than just the Ag community, the hard work that this community rallies together to pull that event off. Is a year-long planning process and the cleanup is equally just a paramount event. So thanks to everyone that concentrates and puts a lot of, a lot of effort forward in, in that event. I'm sure they've already had planning meetings for next year already. So that's how big of an event that it is. I don't know if we mentioned last week, Jeff, that you and I went to the 25th anniversary celebration of Debbie Cohill at Interfaith.
Oh, I forgot. Yes, yes.
Interfaith Coalition up in Hancock. It was a very nice opportunity to recognize the extraordinary volunteerism efforts and the hard work that Debbie Cohill has invested in that community over the last 25 years. They read her attributes and the things that she has accomplished and it, it, it's just mind boggling. So. Of course, Debbie is supported by her husband, John Cohill, and together they are, they are one hardworking, dedicated family to the Hancock and surrounding community. So I'd just like to congratulate her again and maybe she, may she have 25 more years of service and volunteerism. And I think her mind must run 24/7 because it, she's, she's got all kinds of initiatives.
I would just say, John, she's also probably one of the best grant writers around.
There you go. So, yeah, she's, she's phenomenal and just hats off to, we, we can't say thank you enough to Debbie Cohill and, and all her initiatives over the years. The best to her. Number of other things, the last week or two has been rather very busy. Upcoming events, tonight is our monthly or our annual meeting with the town of Hancock. So we'll be meeting at Hancock Town Hall at 6:00 PM. As you've already heard, this Saturday is the 70th anniversary of the Korean War ceasefire. That event will be held at the memorial there on North Potomac Street. Also on Friday, there's the grand opening of Flat Top Suites up at Castle Drive at Cascade, there at the old Fort Ritchie base. And that is Friday at 10:00 AM. Also, just a reminder that there is no meeting next Tuesday. Well, okay, there is no meeting next Tuesday, August 1st for the commissioners, so.
Commissioner Barr, would you like to mention the floor reunion as well?
I would, yes. I think I did make a note on that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We, Jeff and I were invited to the 100th Annual Anniversary Floor Reunion held at Penmar Park on Sunday afternoon. There was probably, what, 100, 125 people there. And we have a book, we have a lineage on the floor family, clean back to the 1700s to this area. And it was a wonderful opportunity to present a citation from the county to them. And it's, it became very evident that a family that goes back that far in our community and all the, the lineage, the marriages. And as I'm walking down through Penmar Park, I heard somebody holler out something and I'm like, well, that voice is familiar. And it's somebody that I had no idea. And I said, well, how are you related to the floor? And they started laughing and they said, don't really know for sure, but we know we could always come to this reunion. So it's, it's, I guess the moral of the story is be careful what you say. Someone in, someone in this community is always related to someone and it's sure to get back. So, but it was a very nice event. Jeff, you might want to add.
Well, if you've ever been to your family reunions, there's always these homemade dishes that great grandma made and passed on down. There was cucumbers and onions and vinegar and what was the apple dessert? Apple. Apple, Lord or salad? And things that, you know, you don't always get, but it's your grandmother or mom's old recipe. And you could see that was part of the bond, other than their religious attachment, but the bond that brought this family together for 100 years. So that was a pretty neat aspect. Of course, I did sample them.
You did more than sample, and you brought a whole bunch of it back here and put it in the refrigerator.
I wanted to praise it, and they gave it to him.
Well, I could say, the other thing I wanted to add, if you, if, and the books over in my office, if you care to have, take time and peruse through the, the book of the family history, the contributions to this community.
Connections to the United States Presidents, direct connections, things like that. So very historic family.
Yeah, the, the volunteerism, the businesses that they started and ran and sold and came down through the family. They're, they're very, it's, it's very apparent that they were connected to this community, and they gave back a lot to this community and supported this community. So it's very, very interesting, very heartwarming, so. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners? I think, very good. With that, we'll move right into staff comments. Yeah, I think so, yeah. Board of Appeals, is that, is that what you have?
No, but I do have a. Good morning, Commissioners. On behalf of the local management board, I am requesting a motion to approve the appointment of Sarah Nadu to serve a first three-year term from July 1st of 2023 through June 30th of 2026. This is not a pay board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, 5-0. Thank you. Is that it?
It's all for me.
Okay. Number, second is Danielle Weaver. Danielle, do you? Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Kinzer, Deputy Director, Washington County Planning and Zoning.
Danielle Weaver, Public Relations and Marketing Director.
So it is with great pleasure this morning that the Planning and Zoning staff would like to announce today's release of the new comprehensive plan for Washington County. For those that don't know what a comprehensive plan is, it's a long-term planning document that's intended to proactively and comprehensively address future growth and land development in our county over the next 20 years. The document evaluates historic and current impacts of growth to project what future physical changes may occur in our environment. It is the foundation for the development of decisions, laws, regulations, policy, and policies related to land development and growth management. The plan was developed through collaboration between planning staff and the Planning Commission. It contains nearly 400 pages of information related to topics that impact growth management in Washington County. Topics include housing, economic development, historic and cultural resources, land preservation efforts, transportation, water resources, and several others. Each of these topics are used to inform the overall development of the land use plan and growth management. With the release of this plan, we are opening a 90-day comment period starting today, seeking input from stakeholders and, stakeholders and citizens alike. The plan is available for review on the county's website, and copies will be available at the Washington County Planning and Zoning Office at 747 Northern Avenue in Hagerstown, and at the main branch of the Public Library at 100 South Potomac Street. Public input meetings will also be held at various locations throughout the county in the fall of 2023 as another opportunity to seek input from the public on the new plan. These meetings are still being scheduled, but will be duly advertised and promoted once dates and locations have been confirmed. Planning staff will be working with Public Relations and on the content and marketing on the website, social media platforms, and other local media outlets. The initial, an initial kickoff email will be going out today to about 100 stakeholder groups and interested parties notifying them of the release and the methods on which they can comment. Anyone interested in further information on the plan should contact our office, Planning and Zoning Office at 747 Northern Avenue, or at 240-313-2430. Does anybody have any questions?
Is a PDF available online?
Yes, it's available in two formats?
Yes, it is available online. The multimedia specialist, Katie Yoder, in my office designed the entire document based off the information that Planning and Zoning had sent to us. And so that will be available today on the website. We have a dedicated page to that. And we will be putting out a press release here at 10:00 AM. It will also, like I said, go on the website. We'll be putting it on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. We will also be having a radio ad that starts this afternoon promoting the comp plan. There will be a video that we are, we're going to be working on that will be able to be played on our channels with Antietam broadband. So we anticipate that starting possibly around August the 9th. We also plan on updating our cover photo at the 1st of August. That will direct people to the comp plan on our website. We will have a billboard ad that's going out. And we will also be putting an ad on, in Leitersburg Cinemas.
Okay, so I think you have a lot of effort going into that. Appreciate that. I think the most critical piece of information for our citizens is not just to be aware of it, but to know the dates and times where they can personally engage besides submitting written comments.
Yes, when those events do come, we pick dates. We will make sure that we create Facebook events and then push out notifications through press releases and other, our other social media channels. Also, throughout the next couple of months, we will be putting pieces of the comp plan onto our social media channels so that people can see it broken apart. So every other week, we will post different sections and different information from it.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we have any other staff comments this morning? Hearing no other staff comments at this time. Next up is citizens' participation. I think we do, do have a number of citizens here this morning. So I'll go ahead and read our statement. This is an oppo, citizens' participation is an opportunity for citizens to comment about an issue or issues of county practices and interests. This is not an interactive dialogue or a question and answer session. It is solely time to hear citizens' comments. Please limit your remarks to three minutes or less, and please state your name and address for the record. So, front row, sec, first, Marty, good morning.
Good morning.
Been a while.
It has been. I was going to call you stranger, but.
Don't you dare. I'll be brief. I'm here to testify, to recommend approval of the Antietam Water Trail acquisition. It's been my experience that projects like this that take a long time and that departments sometimes even, I'm so glad that the staff is paying attention and moving along. It's a future recreational asset. And when you're out of these positions and you look back and you see people enjoying something that you had a part of, it'll be a big, a big thing. It's been my experience. So I think that the, in Quanis Park, about a mile below, the County Historical Trust has remod, or has preserved in 1800 the Sailor House. I recommend you visit it. It's right on the bank of the Antietam. It's already, there's a put-in to the Antietam there. So to have these periodically along, I know there's been talk over the years about between Route 40 and the Funkstown Bridge being developed into a recreational area. So anyhow, these pieces are all important. So I'm here to recommend that you approve this later on your agenda today. And my granddaughter and her husband, it dates me a little bit, went to the Ag Fair Saturday night. We hosted a big event for the family, and they split off, because he's from the Flatlander from the Eastern Shore where they live now. He wanted to see how we did things up here, so. Ag Fair has an attraction and a reputation.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, and thank you for having us. I'm Elise Weber. I'm a relatively new resident of Hagerstown. We live on Millie Parkway in Hagerstown. And as a new resident, I was attracted to the Women's Commission by its mission to communicate the specific issues and concerns of women to the county board. I'm pleased today to be joined by the newest appointed member of the Washington County Commission for Women, Skylah Heiss. We wanted to take a moment to briefly introduce ourselves and to remind the board that the Women's Commission is dedicated to serving women and girls in Washington County. The governor recently appointed six new members for the State Commission for Women. And we're hopeful that the Washington, in Washington County, the commission will continue to promote women as professionals, wives, mothers, and to celebrate their accomplishments. With community engagement as a priority, the commission plans to go out into the community. So in August, our monthly meeting will be a tour of the Women's Club, which recently celebrated its 100th anniversary, offering opportunities for women in the community to, to connect, and also providing safe, low-cost housing for single women. In September, members of our commission are looking forward to joining the city of Hagerstown and Washington County to attend the annual Remembrance in the Park Memorial Ceremony at City Park. The Women's Commission is pleased to pay respect to the memory of the courage, sacrifice, and resilience displayed by our service members, law enforcement officers, and emergency responders, as well as the citizens who selflessly contribute their time and effort to ensure the safety and preparedness of our community. We're also pleased to join and honor our fallen heroes who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty to keep our community safe and protect the citizens of Washington County, Maryland. Thank you.
Good morning, county commissioners. My name is Skylah Heiss, and this is my first time representing the Washington County Women's Commission. As a lifelong resident of Washington County, I have witnessed the growth and development of this community firsthand. Through my many previous volunteer experiences, I have seen the incredible power of collective action and the ripple effect it can have on the lives of individuals, families, and communities. I am excited for this opportunity to bring the same spirit of dedication and compassion to the Washington County Women's Commission. My excitement to join this community stems from my eagerness to roll up my sleeves and get involved in meaningful initiatives, projects, and discussions that will elevate the lives of women in Washington County. Thank you for your time in giving me this opportunity to introduce myself. And if I could ask one more favor, I would love a picture with all of you with my certificate.
Yes, Skylah, you guys, I've been with, I'm the commissioner on, just for clarification, on the Women's Commission. So I usually sit there and shut up. But you guys do a wonderful job. And, and, you know, I can't, you know, you're active. You get out there and you do things. And you could, maybe next time you come in, give us a list of everything you've done since, and that'd be sort of nice, and for everybody to hear the accomplishments you've, you've made. So I do appreciate that. And you want a picture with your certificate?
I do. I want a picture with everyone.
Where do you want, over here?
We'll do it in the front, I guess, here?
Are you coming up with it, sir?
Let me take one with mine as well, sorry. Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Skylah.
What else she did? She volunteered. She's gotten other awards. Okay, other citizens' participation? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Tom Thorson. I'm a 73-year-old senior, and I live in Idle Circle in Washington County. I'm here to briefly again discuss the Washington County Commission on Aging. I would like to thank Commissioner Kiefer on arranging a meeting with the agency with himself, the board president, and the CEO of, of the agency, and offering to obtain any information I needed. But I canceled this meeting via email to Mr. Commissioner, or to Commissioner Kiefer this weekend. I found out Saturday by accident at another public meeting on Washington County seniors that the CEO of the commission will not be attending. Tim Fisher of the agency told me he would attend, and there's no chance the CEO will meet with me. I really have no interest in wasting anyone's time for this meeting since Tim is a lame duck leaving the organization this week. I'm disappointed I was not told earlier that the CEO was not attending, since it's obvious to me now that CEO, CEO was never going to attend. I would also like to thank you again, Commissioner Kiefer, for offering to obtain any information that I needed. But it's very doubtful that the commission and agent would provide this information. In April, I wrote the agency requesting their 990 income filing. The next day, I received a call from a top official of the agency, and they would not provide the 990. Many local nonprofits show the 990 on their website, along with their audits and business plans. This helps ensure public trust and confidence within the community. I finally found the latest 990 this May on my own, and with no help of the agency. The 990, which is current through June of '22. I now see the top two make a combined salary of benefits of approximately $300,000 for a $3 million organization. Like, can I approach and pass out some backup?
Sure. Do you have enough copies for the clerk?
No.
Okay, well, I'll make them. I'll make copies.
On the 990, a question was asked. Were any salary comparisons of similar nonprofits in the area completed? The form was checked no. So I did some salary checks with other similar-sized nonprofits in Washington County, and the salary and benefit packages of these organizations is one-third compared to the Commission on Aging. There is also a $22 million nonprofit in Washington County that the top two executives make a similar amount as the Commission on Aging. The Commission on Aging has now set the bar for high salaries in Washington County for other nonprofits, which is sad. I also have a copy of the Washington County financials. I'm not going to provide those, because you have them, showing, the Commission on Aging received 1.2 million in, in 2023, and 1.8 million in county funding for this year. This does not include any capital funding, which has been $6 million over the years. And I'd like to thank the Washington County Financial Department for retaining these numbers within an hour for me. The Commission on Age is not telling the public these amounts of public meetings, and on their social meeting pages, which I think they're even paying Facebook to bring their page to the top of our news feeds. The information the Commission on Aging is telling the public at meetings like this past Saturday looks suspect. The comparison of Garrett and Alacan- savings for any of the 300-plus nonprofits in the county. No response to date from the county or the city. My short resume has been with the county clerk for a year. If any of this information I have presented is incorrect, please let me know. I believe in fact-based decision-making. Let's start a triage with this nonprofit and help get the money to the seniors who really need the help. That's all I really want, and I really want to help the poorest seniors. And again, Mr. Kiefer, thanks for your email yesterday, and I would gladly accept your invitation to a meeting with you and the board president only. I read some older public financials submitted to the IRS by the Commission on Aging, have some knowledge of the perceived complexity of the Commission on Aging. I'm not a CPA or accountant or lawyer, but I have good managerial accounting knowledge of income and balance sheets for very complex multinational companies. Call me when you're free.
If I could just say, President Barr, I know we don't normally communicate dialogue, but since you're here, I just want to make sure you reached out to meet with me about the Commission on Aging, and I suggest that we meet at the Commission on Aging with their CEO and maybe a few other representatives so we could get some information. I understand the meeting that we had scheduled for today after our commissioner meeting, you asked to be canceled because the CEO couldn't make it, but we rescheduled for next Tuesday. Is that still something you want to do? I just, I want to make sure that it wasn't that the CEO refused to meet with you, she wasn't available today, and we rescheduled at your request.
Can we, can we take this dialogue up after the meeting?
Yeah, I'd be glad, yeah.
I think that would be best.
Mr. Kiefer, you are correct.
Okay. I just want to make clear there's no refusal. That, that really taints other things that may have been said. I just, there's no refusal to meet with you. We rescheduled for next Tuesday, so I just want to make that clear. Okay.
Okay. And one other thing, consider getting the bike rack out in front, get a brace or that all. Might even pay for it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thorson. Other citizens' participation?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Eric Yekley, Vice President, WCTA. Just to reiterate what President Mawen said at last meeting, if revenues allow and you do mid-year budget adjustments, please remember WCPS in those budget adjustments. This school district really needs some additional funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Citizens' participation? Okay, hearing none, we'll move right a little into our next agenda item, which is presentation regarding Partners in Care Maryland Incorporated program. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. I'm Mandy Arnold, President and CEO for Partners in Care. This is Brenda. You guys know me.
Good morning, Brenda.
I figured that, I didn't need to introduce.
Is it Cham? Is that how we pronounce it?
I am. No, it's Cham. So, good morning, and thank you very much for your time and for having us. We briefly just wanted to discuss and give you some information on Partners in Care, who we are and what we do. So Partners in Care is a local nonprofit, 501(c)(3) that started October of this year, will be 30 years ago, in Anarundel County. It is a volunteer-based organization that serves seniors, and we allow seniors to age in place with dignity and respect. Partners in Care is, offers a unique model and mission. We service people through service exchange and time banking. And what that means is everyone participates, and the volunteers bank time for when they need services. Partners in Care was approached by the state-level Department of Aging just about six, eight months before COVID hit to bring on a program called Community for Life. Community for Life is the same type of program that Partners in Care offers, which is transportation, handyman, and member care services. And those services were exactly what we offered, so I agreed to partner with Rona Kramer, who at the time was the Secretary for Department of Aging. And at that time, it was to bring on the Community for Life program for all the counties that we served already. In addition, was Washington County, and then recently Montgomery County. So what we were asked to do was to just bring the Community for Life program here to Washington County. That program, again, is transportation, handyman, and member care services for a fee guaranteed services. That is a program that we offer within Partners in Care. However, we are now with a new secretary, that I'm sure you're all aware, so we can offer our service exchange program here in Washington County. What that means is the members can join our program for no fee at all. It's just a matter of participation. So I'm saying that because I know that, and we were just reading some statistics of, that you have quite a bit of your seniors aged 60 and older in this county that are either at or below poverty level. So it's, it's important for them to be able to have transportation services that their handyman that helps them age in place safely in their home, as well as member care, which is just, it's everything non-medical. So it's advocacy, we help them navigate agencies, applications, anything that they would need, we help them vet contractors, anything so that we can allow them to be safe and not taken advantage of. Our transportation program is arm-in-arm, door-through-door. We cross county lines, our volunteers stay and wait with the members, they can go, after, most of the time, it's doctor's appointments that they need to go to, but on the way home, they can stop, pick up a prescription if they'd like, stop at the grocery store. This is just briefly the things that we offer. So I wanted you guys to be aware of who we are, what we are. It's important, because we operate with volunteers, and the volunteers do 99% of our services, that we have the county support and the county buy-in to be in the county in order to grow. It's a matter of, we build time, we bank time while we build community. And last year, our volunteers, and you guys have a copy of this, but you have FY22 numbers, in the counties that we're up and running and active in, our volunteers donated over 47,000 hours and drove over 204,000 miles in FY22. In FY23, which is, it just ended, because the numbers that we sent you was only until May, but in FY23, our volunteers donated over 54,000 hours and drove over 202,000 miles to support seniors. I think it's important for this county to have an organization like Partners in Care, just since we've been up here with the Community for Life was just as COVID hit, so we're really not out and about yet. Hopefully, with Brenda's connections and being a part of this community, we will be able to grow.
I got a quick question for you. Just give me an example. I call you and say my door lock's broke on my house, I can't fix it, so I call you, and it's, I guess that's a safety item. Tell me the procedure, if, how does that work? We call you, send a handyman, correct?
Correct.
And you fix the door lock?
Correct.
And what's the cost?
It's not a cost. So, and I apologize, let me, I'm not good at public speaking, so I get nervous. But, so here's how it works. Everyone becomes a, joins our program. Everyone becomes a member. Everyone is vetted.
Okay, so I join Partners in Care.
You join Partners in Care. You become a member. You need services. You call up, we ask for seven days' notice.
Okay.
You call up, most of it is transportation.
Okay.
I'm going to start with transportation. You call up, you need a ride. We put your request in our database, proprietary database. Our volunteers go into the database and they accept the ride.
Okay.
They take the member to wherever it is that they need to go, and then back. The volunteer then calls in their hours and their miles, so it gets banked in the time bank for when they need services. So what does the member that receives the services do? They may make friendly phone calls, they may write the birthday cards for the month for the members, they may donate. We have boutiques, one in Frederick County, one in Anarundel County, and you know that we all collect too much stuff as we age. They might donate stuff to our store, that's their give-back, so that when they call to ask for services, they don't feel like they're asking for a charity or for a handout.
Gotcha.
Same thing happens with handyman services. They need a railing, the railings leak, shaky, they need a step secured, they need grabbars, you know, installed in their bathroom. They call up, they put in that request, anything that keeps them safe at home. A volunteer picks that service up, they go and provide those services, they come back, they call in their time, and they bank their time and their miles. 18 years of age or older to volunteer, 60 years of age or older to receive services.
And where do you get most of your funding from?
We write grants from, yeah, it's, it's just all over.
Okay.
Have you, you have not yet submitted any grants to Washington County?
We have, the Gaming Commission.
Okay, good, thank you.
It sounds like actually a pretty good service.
I've been to your location in Frederick.
You have?
Budget Secretary Brinkley was there. I think you had a delayed grand opening because of COVID.
Yes.
And I understand your thrift shop, it's, it's very nice.
So everything in that store is the same in Anarundel County? Everything in the store is donated? It's ran by volunteers, and it goes back to, once we get it up and it starts to be a success, that all of the proceeds go back to support the program? This year, Anarundel County store, because it's been in existence for quite some time, has given back over $300,000 to the program.
Nice. Mandy, recently, I've witnessed a very horrible experience with, sitting in a doctor's lobby, a very elderly couple came in, the receptionist handed them an iPad and said, "Go over and fill it out," and they were, they were, they were, one of them sat there with tears.
I know.
And went back to the window twice, asked for assistance. They were treated very rudely, condescending, treated like they were stupid. I mean, can you, is your organization, can they go to the doctor's office with them, or?
They do.
Okay.
They go with them, they wait with them, so it's not like, and no disrespect to the county, but it's not like county transportation. So we work very closely in, in Anarundel County with our county's transportation, and we provide a lot of services for the Department of Aging down there. And our members, when we say we don't have someone, but you can call the county, they're just like, "Oh, no." Don't let us call the county. Our volunteers go with them, they help them with the, the program, they help them with the, the tablets. I mean, it's, to me, it's insane that you, I mean, if you don't know how to operate technology, you're lost, and there's no one there to help you. But our volunteers work with them. During COVID, we partnered with the state, we were given 125 free tablets, we, we gave them out to all of our members who was not tech-savvy. Our volunteers did one-on-one training with them, to teach them how to do their telehealth visits, teach them how to shop online for their groceries, as well as to interact and connect with their family and friends online during COVID.
So.
Mr. Harvey has a question.
Well, thank you for what, thank you for what you're doing, and, you know, I'm excited about it, and I've talked to Brenda before, and I know she's excited about, you know, how this fits into Washington County and how it can grow and be another layer of support to our elderly community along with the elder group. Brenda, would, is there some, something else you'd like to add, explain how that's gonna, gonna contribute in layering? Because you've been to a number of these forums that, you know, I've been to, too?
Yes, thank you, thank you, commissioners. So I actually came to know about Partners in Care years ago, scrolling on Facebook, I saw a graphic, needing volunteers, and I thought, wow, it sounds like a great organization. So I was one of those volunteers taking members to doctor's appointments, lunch with a friend, grocery shopping at Walmart, to the barber shop for a haircut. Now, as a service navigator, sometimes I am still needed to take a member to a doctor's appointment. And what those doctor's appointments entail, I have one member who, we enjoy each other's company, he loves Tom Petty music, so I have the radio dial set on 16 when he gets in the car, we're on our way to his doctor's appointment. He enjoys walking in together, because I always ask, I don't want to make that assumption, because we want our seniors to be as independent as possible. So I ask him, "You want me to go in with you? I don't mind." So we go in together, I sit with him in the lobby area, he's given paperwork to complete, you need some help completing it? Sometimes he'll say yes, sometimes he'll say no, Ms. Brenda, I think I understand it this time. So if I need to help him with that form that he needs to fill out, I assist him with it, again, trying to, as an educator, you know, want to enable people, but you want to support where support is needed and pull back to allow for some independence. So I'll help him complete that form, he'll go to, in to see the doctor by himself, because that's his privacy, that's his, his health, talking with his doctor, he'll come back out, we'll walk to the car together, so that's that arm-in-arm support that we speak of, that door-to-door support. We'll get back in the car, he may want to stop by the dollar store to do a little shopping. I may go in with him, again, no assumptions, you want me to go in with you to carry the basket? Most often, he'll say yes, we'll go in, he'll do his shopping, pay for his materials and things that he's bought, come back to the car, I take him home, drop him off, take care, we'll see you the next time. And he'll often call a few days later to put in his next trip that he might need for his next ride, put that into the system. Most often, my other volunteer will pick it up and accompany him on that appointment. So the organization is a, really a premier organization in helping our older adults age safely in place and as independently as possible. I find the work that they do is to be God's work, good work, and I'm happy to talk to people more about it and recruit volunteers and members as well.
Mandy, Brenda, thanks for what you do. I heard someone say recently, and I love the quote, "No senior is past their prime." Everyone, regardless of age, has something to contribute to the community. And certainly seniors are oftentimes one of the more vulnerable populations in our community. I'm curious about, I'm just looking at your, your website, the Community for Life membership is $216 a month. So in order to get those services, is, seniors have to pay $216 a month? It looks like for eight hours of service a month, it's $216. How do most seniors pay for that?
Well, right now, it's a Medicaid, you don't have to qualify for Medicaid, they believe in the program so much that they pay $200 a month towards it.
Okay.
The reason why that is, that's the Community for Life, that's the paid service. That service is guaranteed. That is what we came into Washington County with. But right now, Medicaid pays $200 of all memberships.
Okay.
The service exchange part, where everybody participates, is the volunteer-based, where it's not guaranteed. However, we match, 97% of our trips are matched.
Okay, so some, it's, some federal funding, I suppose, flows into your organization to cover some of these services?
Just for the Community for Life.
For the guaranteed services?
Yes, and that's, because that's a contracted program that we have four, five years, it's three years left on the program right now.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that.
Thank you. But I'd like to also just mention that in our programs, though it is important for people to get to and from the doctors, that is not the only place that we take a person. So anywhere that someone will pick their keys up and want to go is where we take them.
So in order to get those services, is seniors have to pay $216 a month? It looks like for eight hours of service a month, it's $216. How do most seniors pay for that?
Well, right now, it's a Medicaid. You don't have to qualify for Medicaid. They believe in the program so much that they pay $200 a month towards it. The reason why that is, that's the Community for Life. That's the paid service. That service is guaranteed. That is what we came into Washington County with. But right now, Medicaid pays $200 of all memberships.
Okay.
The service exchange part, where everybody participates, is the volunteer base where it's not guaranteed. However, we match, ninety-seven percent of our trips are matched.
Okay. So some, it's, some federal funding, I suppose, flows into your organization to cover some of these services?
Just for the Community for Life.
For the guaranteed services?
Yes. Because that's a contracted program that we have for five years. It's three years left on the program right now.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for that.
Thank you. But I'd like to also just mention that in our programs, though it is important for people to get to and from the doctors, that is not the only place that we take a person. So anywhere that someone will pick their keys up and want to go is where we take them. We take them to the hairdresser. We take them to the mall. We've taken people out on dates. We take them to dinner. Wherever it is that someone would pick their keys up to go is where they can ask to go. And again, it is arm-in-arm, door through door. And I just want to tell one story real quick about how dedicated our volunteers are. One morning, seven o'clock, I'm in the office doing paperwork. The phone rings. I answer it. The person on the other end says, "I want to pay for a cab." I said, "I'm sorry, this is Partners in Care. Did you call the right place?" "Yes, I want to pay for a cab." I said, "Okay, I'm sorry. I don't normally answer the phone, but if you give me some more information, I'm sure I can help you." In the middle of the night, she said, "My husband called," or yesterday, "my husband called. He has to pick up Ms. so-and-so at 10:00 AM to, for tomorrow morning for a doctor appointment. In the middle of the night, my husband had a heart attack. We do not want Ms. so-and-so to go without her doctor appointment, so we want to pay for a cab." So after I, I spent the first nine months when I joined this organization crying. So after I composed myself, I'm like, first of all, how's your husband? Right? You're wanting, he's fine, but she, Ms. so-and-so is expecting him to be at her house at 9:00 AM. He's not going to be there. We want to pay for a cab. So I just said, "Well, I can assure you that no matter what, I personally will get up and take that member anywhere that you tell me to take them." That is the dedication of our volunteers when they get involved with our organization. And I believe that that's something that really could be beneficial to here in Washington County, Stephen.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you so much again for your time.
Next, hotel rental tax fund request, presentation of historic Boyer House in Sharpsburg. Good morning, Mayor.
Want another, need another chair?
There's another chair.
There's two down there on the end.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Susan Buchanan, Director Office of Grant Management. And with me today, we have Russ Weaver, Mayor, Town of Sharpsburg, Jacob Martz, Vice Mayor of Town of Sharpsburg. Mr. Fry? Dennis Fry, Save Historic Antietam Foundation Co-Founder and Vice President. And I believe we have, we have Dan Spedden from the Hagerstown Washington County Convention and Visitors Bureau. We're here this morning because the Town of Sharpsburg has submitted a request for hotel rental tax grant funding, requesting $99,000 to assist with the costs associated with purchasing the Boyer House. The house is also known as the War Wounds House and is a Sharpsburg residence damaged by the Civil War battle within the Town of Sharpsburg. The building contains significant evidence of the battle, and the town plans to purchase, preserve, and market it as a tourist destination. The town anticipates the property will lure the visitors of the Antietam Battlefield into the town, providing an economic boost to the local businesses there. Total project cost is $154,000, with $15,000 from the Town of Sharpsburg, fifteen from the Save Historic Antietam Foundation, and 20,000 provided by the county surplus funding grant. That surplus funding grant was awarded to the Save Historic Antietam Foundation, which would allow them then to sell the property at a reduced cost to the town. This application has been reviewed by the Office of Grant Management, and the project is consistent with Hotel Rental Tax Funding Guidelines and meets several of the program's funding goals. Based upon these factors, it is eligible for consideration of funding. The hotel rental tax fund balance will be reduced by the amount of this award. And current balance of the fund, I will update that amount because it has changed since the writing of this ARF. It is $658,544. Now I'll turn over the presentation to Mr. Martz.
Good morning. Jacob Martz, I'm the Vice Mayor of Sharpsburg. And as Susan said, I'm here with Mayor Russ Weaver and Dennis Fry. And we're here in support of our grant request for purchase, the historic War Wounds House in Sharpsburg, which is most certainly one of the most unique structures, not only in Sharpsburg, but in Washington County. And I just wanted to highlight some of the things that make it such a unique structure. You look at the first slide here, you'll first notice, if you can advance the slide, please, the transition between this slide and the nineteenth-century photo and the modern photo? Can you advance the slide, please? There it goes. The house is essentially, I just took that photo just a few weeks ago, and the house is virtually unchanged. And what you see today is essentially the same structure. That was constructed in the 1830s. It represents an excellent example of period architecture and design. It's got all the original trim, the walls, the floorboards. They're all original, and very few modifications were made to the house. And even the ones that were made are, in a way, becoming historic in their own right. Like, for example, even the kitchen looks like it's from a 1940 sales catalog. It's pretty remarkable. Next slide, please. Another interesting quality of the house is that it, up until the death of the previous resident last year, Kathleen Boyer, the house had remained within the same family since its construction. What you see here are a collection of photos from some of the previous owners and other family members that were found within the home. And that included the Gloss, the Michael, and the Boyer families. And the house itself was a nexus of activity for a lot of the prominent families in Sharpsburg history. And one of my favorite pictures is right there in the center. A gentleman on the bottom center there by the name of Omar Boyer, he was a previous owner of the house. And you can see him standing there next to one of the original pews from the Dunker Church, which was a focal point of both armies during the Battle of Antietam. And after the Dunker Church collapsed in the 1920s, 1921, I believe, Mr. Boyer salvaged what remnants of the church he could and made them available for the reconstruction of the church for the centennial. And it's because of him that we have the original components of the church that we have today. Next slide, please. And all of this means is that the, the house has excellent prominence. It's a historical record that, of ownership that we can trace back all the way to its construction. Here are some inscriptions that are on the brick facade of the house. On the left is JG 1845, and on the right is FG 1854. And that's Joseph Gloss and Frank Gloss, two of the sons of the original owner, the builder of the house, William Gloss. And after William's death in 1864, the house would pass over to Joseph Gloss. Next slide, please. And probably one of the most striking features, and one of the most important things about the house is noticeable battle damage that you can still see on the house today. The house is directly adjacent to the battlefield, and it's right near where a Confederate unit was positioned. And you can see the damage there in the form of artillery impact points from federal artillery that was targeting Confederate units in and around the Sharpsburg area and firing in that direction. And they can still be seen very clearly on the wall that faces the battlefield. In terms of battle damage structures, and I'm sure Dennis will correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm from the Civil War. There's no other structure in Sharpsburg I know, none on the battlefield. And I believe, as far as I know, in the entire state, that come close to this level of battle damage from the Civil War. And one, another interesting point to note is that while you can notice that, over the years, the family made repairs of the house, they made a deliberate effort to preserve the battle damaged areas of the house. Next slide, please. And the battle damage isn't limited to the exterior of the structure. More evidence of the battle can be seen inside, including evidence of an artillery round that penetrated the exterior wall and damaged the railing there, bullet holes in window casings, charred wood rafters. Another significant finding that Dennis and I made was the discovery of what we believe to be a blood stain on one of the floorboards that you can see right there, presumably from the house's use as a hospital after the battle. Next slide. Fortunately for us, this house was owned by a family that literally saved everything. They discarded nothing. We found books, artifacts, pictures, documents, records dating as far back as the late 18th century. That included everything from tax records, business ledgers, deeds. They even had some correspondence with the county commissioners at the time. The house produced a windfall for our town archives and our museum, and more than tripled our, our resources there. It's provided a wealth of information for us, and we still have so much more to go through. We're not even done. Next slide, please. To summarize, the War Wounds House is a, is a unique artifact in its own right, and it's destined to become one of the most significant historical structures in Washington County. It's been a rich source of information in history that exhibits a level of battle damage that surpasses even those structures located on the battlefield. It has the potential to be an excellent historical resource and teaching tool that creates a tangible link with the battle, as well as offering insight into the hardships experienced by citizens of Sharpsburg during the Civil War, and helping to foster a greater understanding of Sharpsburg's unique history. And it's worth mentioning also that up until this time, we've been working also with Preservation Maryland, and we've already begun the application process to obtain funds necessary to stabilize and preserve the house through the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. And they're very positive. They've been very helpful and enthusiastic about the project so far. So again, thank you very much for your time. And in closing, I'll just say that, you know, we often use the phrase when we walk into an old structure, "If these walls could talk." And while the walls of this house don't have a voice, they nonetheless speak volumes about our history of our town.
I, I couldn't think of a better house to preserve than the one you just showed us. I'm familiar with it. I mean, of the Civil War buff. But I only a couple of curious questions. So I see your, your scope of your project. Where do you, and not one detail, it's just a couple of items. What do you do to, what do you do? What's your preservation going to be? That might be one for Dennis over there. Or who does that?
Well, one reason, Commissioner, we contacted Preservation Maryland, is this is a specialty that they offer. And they offer this to the town. They actually have skilled craftsmen, including professionals, either architects and engineers, that will already come and examine the house. And in fact, they've given the town a preliminary assessment of what might be required. And so that's formed the actual basis then for the grant request the town is now making to the state with the assistance of Preservation Maryland to continue the preservation of the property. The most important thing is the exterior, to ensure that there is no water infiltration. That's the most important of all, to make sure that the exterior is stable. And then with the interior, the plan is, is not to put in an HVAC system and all of these types of things that are quite intrusive in historic homes, but to allow the home to breathe naturally. And I'm quite familiar with historic structures that do not have HVAC, that can live well without modern intrusion. And so it does have electricity. It does have plumbing. But the idea is not to upgrade any of that for any real purpose, but to let the building, especially its exterior, be in the best condition it can be in.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Randy, if I could speak to that just from the town's perspective. That's a great question. That's the same question I asked when this project came up, is who's going to take care of this and do it going forward? Certainly, the Town of Sharpsburg doesn't have the resources to do that. So Dennis and I did due diligence with Preservation Maryland, other groups. And we're very comfortable that through grants, we can both stabilize it and present it to the public as a historic structure. So the town is committed to maintaining the property as part of our MOLING activities, at least for now.
Right.
And to keep it very, it, it looks really good right now. We just had our guys back there. But we'll continue to do that for a while, but it's going to transition to grants and partnerships with the different historic groups.
Thank you, Russ. Thanks, Dennis.
Well, I'm excited about it. I'm looking forward to touring it when you have the docents trained and the volunteers, and it's all up and running. Will some of the other materials that you're going through be available for people to examine, research by appointment or something down? That aren't going to be displayed, but when, it's going to be quite an effort to catalog everything, I imagine. Isn't that right, Mr. Fry?
Fortunately, I'm not doing that, but the Sharpsburg Museum of History will be responsible for that.
We have a Sharpsburg Museum of History.
Right.
That's accepted all these. They are cataloging it. And one of the principles of the museum, and the bylaws and the MOU we have with them from the town to the museum, is that artifacts are there for public consumption, and they'll have programs to present this stuff. They've already done a few things. They had a program the other day, Women of Sharpsburg, and they presented some of the things that were in the Boyer House.
Wow.
They've already cataloged over 500 documents that we found in the house.
It is truly a treasure trove of information.
Let me add also that a year ago this time, we discovered that the property was in the hands of flippers. And this was devastating to discover because their intention was not what we're presenting to you today. And this is where the Save Historic Antietam Foundation was able to step in. We've been a nonprofit in this county for 40 years now, and we are an all-volunteer organization. We've never had any staff, but we've raised millions of dollars over the years. And so we were able to come in and purchase the property from the flippers. And then we are selling it to Sharpsburg, no profit to us at all, for the purpose of its continued preservation. So this is a classic example of a nonprofit being able to step in in an intermediary way. We are not, we don't own land. We don't own property. We buy it and then transfer it to an entity that can protect it and preserve it in perpetuity. And so we were really pleased to be able to perform that role in this case, especially consider the, considering the threat that this property faced.
I have no further questions, but I haven't, I don't need anyone. I'll make a motion to approve their request.
I second.
Of $99,000.
I'd like to second.
Just a few additional comments. I'm glad to see the town council with the help of Mr. Fry, the, Mr. Spedden, the county. I'm glad the Town of Sharpsburg recognizes all of the history you have in your town. You know, saving this home is important. I'm excited. I'd like to see what it looks like now, so I can see what it looks like a year from now, when you have it restored. Do you plan to, do you plan to keep the inside of the home to make it look period to the Civil War or something a little more modern? What is your hope there? Are you taking the kitchen out? I know it's a 1940s kitchen, but I'm sure the technology between the Civil War and the 1940s is a little different.
Concerned everyone who's involved. Wayne, I'd like to wait on that and have our meetings. Right now, if it's going to be flipped, we needed to purchase it and get it into our control. There's a lot of ideas of what to do. I move cautiously on this stuff, and I, we have a lot of constituents that we want to bring in, meet with them, see what's best for the property. But I think you'll be proud of it when we're done. One, one recommendation is to do away with the kitchen. Not, not make it any, not bring it up to date at all. You already heard that. And it's, it's a remarkable place inside with the woodwork and everything. A lot of the doors and all that stuff are still just like they were then, so. But I'll, I'll trust Preservation Maryland and the historians to tell me what the right approach will be, and then we'll come to you guys and tell you what we're going to be doing. And that's what, that's what I think. So the next phase is that plan. That plan's in the process, assuming we were going to purchase it. So we're not waiting, but there's a lot, there's stabilization and then interpretation pieces of work that need to be done. And I thank you guys for helping us a lot with Project Open Space. This will be tied into that park that the county is funding on the corner of Church and Main Street there. This, this will be one of the things that park points to in a walking tour of Sharpsburg. So it's coming together, and we got to work on it.
Good job.
I'd also like to thank the commissioners for the grant that you provided the Save Historic Antietam Foundation, the $20,000, because that reduced the cost overall to the Town of Sharpsburg to purchase from us. So really appreciate the opportunity to apply for that and have you recognize us with, with that funding. Thank you.
I want to say thank you. The mayor and I have been communicating for a number of months and all the hard work, all the dedication that you've put to this. And it's a win-win for not only Sharpsburg, but for all of Washington County.
And it's been a team approach. And it's been a team approach. I mean, the county's been very helpful, Suzanne.
Dan, thank you. And Dennis, thank you.
Pleasure. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Frye.
So it's been a collaborative effort that's win-win. So if you have a motion and a second, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Five of O.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Antietam Water Trail Acquisition and Merrill Metals Memorandum of Understanding.
Good morning, Commissioners. Andrew Ashenwind, Director of Public Works.
Good morning, Todd Moser, Real Property Administrator, Division of Engineering.
We're here seeking a motion to accept and execute the memorandum of understanding with Merrill Metals for the described fee simple property acquisition and easement conveyance and to approve an ordinance approving the purchase and to authorize the execution of the necessary documentation to finalize the acquisition. Um, that was a mouthful, but really I want to walk through a little bit about what this is. Um, about two years ago, Washington County acquired parcel 615, which there should be an exhibit up there. It's the northern limits of what's shown at the corner of Security and Antietam Drive, and that was for the purpose of creating a water trail park. Um, so that was going to be the parking area and then further south is our proposed, uh, access to the creek. Um, and we had programmed future funds, uh, in the capital improvement plan under the Antietam Water Trail to purchase additional lands for that as well as additional stream frontage. That encompasses, uh, scale-wise, you're looking at about, uh, 800 additional linear feet of stream frontage. Uh, the park area would have gated parking, picnic tables, uh, boating tubing access to the Antietam Creek. Uh, so once we accomplished that, we, we met with Merrill Metals, who's the owner of the, the lands in the south, um, about the acquisition, then they offered the lands for sale to the county for $1 in exchange for the stabilization of two existing storm, uh, water drain outfalls, which are marked there as the hatched yellow area. Um, and the reason, uh, for this is they operate under industrial stormwater permit and they needed to stabilize or find areas for, for credit that meet their, uh, permit requirements, similar to what the county is looking to do with our MS4 permit. Um, so there's some mutual benefit there in this arrangement. The county gets the land essentially for a dollar in exchange for, uh, splitting what will be the credits, uh, once the work is performed. So rather than doing two separate permits, uh, through MDE and courting and all that work, uh, this will streamline that process. So we truly think it's a win-win with everyone involved. I know, um, Merrill Metals is, is supportive of the overall water trail project and they were excited about that. They're under local ownership, um, and again, they're excited for the opportunity to partner with us on this project.
Who would normally, who would normally be responsible for that stabilization? Merrill Metals?
So it's on their property right now, uh, with the exception of you'll see on the northern limit, it actually, it actually starts on the county property. So that gets back to you're, you're limiting the potential, um, if they were, if they were going to do their own area. But really it's also a gray area. The outfalls are eroded and it's eating into the right of way. So some cases, we would have to have our highway department go out there and put a head wall.
So we're not, we're not, we wouldn't get into any hidden things like hazardous materials from the Merrill Metals or, and when we're stabilizing those?
Not that I'm aware of. We would mostly clear out the area, uh, put rip wrapper large boulders to reduce the amount of erosion that's going on. One of them, the southern limit, um, could potentially have a head wall or end section just to prevent that undercutting of the roadway.
Um, I'm curious, I'm just looking in the fiscal impact one here, funds available in the CIP account. I assume you don't mean the dollar to transfer, what, the, the cost to, um, stabilize those two stormwater drains? What is the estimated cost on that?
I, I would think just several thousand dollars in material costs available to that. We have funds programmed for the actual park construction, so it would be kind of part of a larger project, which I believe we have around at least $150,000 for, for that effort.
Some money that's already budgeted.
Correct.
For the project, you have enough excess to cover this as well?
Yes.
I think it'll be a great addition once the park's done and that extra buffer space is going to be nice along the creek. I, I move to support this.
I'll second it.
Ready to vote? Any other comments or questions? I, I just think it's a good win-win for, uh, all the entities and parties involved and it, you know, it's working with Merrill Metals, a longstanding, locally owned, good, good, uh, peer in the, in the, in our community as a corporate citizen and, um, it's a win-win. So, motion and second, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Airport Strategic Plan and Branding Recommendations.
Andrew Ashenwind, Director of Public Works.
Neil Doran, Airport Director.
Oh, Daniel Weaver, Public Relations and Marketing Director. I'm sorry.
Uh, we're very excited to present the Airport Strategic Plan and Branding Changes. I believe we gave you an update several months ago that we were undertaking this effort. And so before I go into the topic in the presentation, I first want to thank all the staff at the airport, as well as Public Relations and the Airport Advisory Committee, who I know we have several members here as well today, who participated in the process and endorsed the plan that's being presented. Um, so why did we undertake this effort? Well, a lot has changed in the last five years in terms of both the leadership at the airport as well as the commercial airline industry. During that time, uh, Hagerstown lost its federal essential air service status. The industry went through a pandemic with flights grounded to now you're seeing record demand that the industry really is not a, able to handle, resulting in, uh, unfortunately many carriers cutting routes and services to remain profitable. So that's a little bit about the business climate. So while Neil and I were very eager to dive right in, we first wanted to take the opportunity, some time to gather information, reflect and plan for where timed resources should be focused. Uh, we believe that the airport is an important transportation hub and has the potential, um, to expand its market and play a role in the region as well as economic development and different opportunities that can, uh, be provided. So succinctly, we think the airport is capable of more. Uh, in the plan, we looked, uh, at with a consultant, we looked at three focus areas and so we'll let these, uh, individuals go through these a bit further, but first was branding and marketing strategy. We wanted to define the identity and the service reach of the airport as well as the existing and future markets. That's both for commercial service customers as well as the business community. And so we will be recommending a change in the strategy, uh, and recommendation for adoption. The second focus area was business planning strategy that has to look at growth opportunities to support the airport services. There's a lot of things that we do at the airport, um, in many ways we do operate as its own, uh, business. And then finally, the airport operations, we needed to look at the limits of the staffing, uh, levels that we have and needs associated with the industry best practices and different growth strategies that could occur. Uh, as far as what that means for today, we're not recommending any changes for adoption. That was more just some, um, internal planning effort that we wanted to have done. And so overall, these strategies, we're looking to have them serve as a roadmap for directing staff's efforts and to maximize HDR's potential. And so I'd like to turn it over to Neil, uh, who'll, uh, cover the branding and marketing.
Yes, thank you very much for your opportu- opportunity to speak this morning. So the branding and marketing looked at who really is our market, who is our customer. We know we have a lot of people that live near the airport. Uh, if we take a, a two-hour drive from the airport, there's about 11 million people in that area. 90-minute drive, 7.2 million. And even within 30 minutes of the airport, we have a lo- a strong local market of our, our four states, four county area that has more than 550,000 people living in that area. Consultants have pointed out that as the airport's closer to Washington and Baltimore saturate, more opportunities may be open for Hagerstown or Manassas to step into. Population trends and growth is occurring, so we see people moving in this direction, a westward direction, uh, attractive, affordable housing in suburban areas and ex-urban areas. And, uh, we also see rising incomes and people's ability to travel. So these individuals, these potential customers are moving further away from BWY, further away from Reagan and Dulles and closer to Hagerstown. Next slide, please. We wanted to shift our perspective a little bit. When we were in a central airline service community, the federal government provided those subsidies because they saw us as geographically remote. They saw us as rural, as small and needing that support so that we could have the transportation amenity to support our business community. But these perceived characteristics of being rural, of being small, uh, really don't fit the bill of what we really are. And we don't want to limit our brand, our image, or our potential moving forward. We have shown for more than a decade that we can support the ultra-low-cost carrier model with Allegiant Airlines and we've been successful. But we want to have a brand and a marketing strategy that says we are capable of more. If airlines would like to come here, we can be a strong partner and support them. We feel that we can fill a vital need. We have proximity, as we said, to large population centers and we offer things that our travelers really appreciate, a lower-stress airport environment, friendly staff, affordable fares, non-stop flights. Just a few, uh, statistics here to point out what we're describing. We see the counties around us growing. This is over a 10-year period between 2010 and 2020. We see all these populations growing and, uh, we see some of these populations becoming quite large, uh, and they're within a reasonable driving distance of HDR. Next slide. What this shows us here is the, uh, the affluence of these counties. And we see some communities that are, are quite wealthy. Some of the wealthiest counties in the United States are nearby, such as Loudoun County, Virginia, Montgomery County, Maryland. Frederick County, Maryland is doing very well and growing. And we even see that within our I-81 corridor, these communities are growing and incomes are rising. So what is the Washington-Baltimore CSA? This means Combined Statistical Area. So we take Washington's MSA, Baltimore's MSA and combine it with Hagerstown-Martensburg, combine it with Winchester, combine it with a few other smaller MSAs. This has surpassed Chicago. This is more than 10 million people in this area and it is large enough to support a fourth commercial service airport option. How are we doing in Hagerstown? Over the last year, we've supported more than 66,000 passenger operations and even though we've had airline service for decades, uh, we expect to set new records. I believe the, uh, the mark that we won it surpasses 69,000 and that happened in 1997. So it looks good that during calendar year 2023, we may surpass that. So we're recognizing the service model has changed and we need a name, we need a branding that will accurately communicate to consumers all that we are and what we could become. And unfortunately, uh, as, as we know in the school's geography is something that's not really taught. Uh, there is a lack of awareness. Uh, people don't look at maps, they don't study the names of cities and, and areas. And I found in a recent event, 60 miles away, I set up a table in College Park, Maryland, and a surprisingly large number of people there did not know, not only that there was an airport in Hagerstown, they did not know the community of Hagerstown existed. They did not know Washington County existed and that was just down the road. So if that's the, if that's the situation 60 miles away, what's the situation to a consumer in central Florida or in California? Do they know a city of 40, 45,000 people? Likely not. So we're suggesting a change in branding, name, logo and tagline. And I'll turn this over now to Ms. Weaver to discuss. Oh, I'm sorry, I had one more. Okay, sorry. So people may not know the name Hagerstown, but what do they know? Just about everybody knows Washington DC. Now, we already fly to areas like Orlando, Tampa and Myrtle Beach, but we find that the local residents in those areas are not seeing HDR as a destination and not seeing the airport as a way that they can use to access all the wonderful amenities of the national capital region. Can they fly to HDR to take their family to, uh, tour the Smithsonian institutions? Can they use HDR, uh, to see the, uh, the battlefields in Antietam and, and the Civil War trails and other things? So we think marketing is so very important. We'll give you an example of that. How many people would buy a ticket to fly to Sanford, Florida if it was marketed that way? How many would buy the ticket if it was Sanford, Seminole County, Florida? Most people don't know where Sanford is because Sanford is not a large city. But what changed for them? They called themselves Orlando Sanford International Airport and now they serve millions of passengers a year. Same thing happened in Melbourne, Florida. They're 70 miles away from Orlando. They changed their name to Melbourne Orlando International Airport and they've been growing tremendously. So we must think bigger in the same way. We need to highlight the larger region we serve and not merely our local city and county. Many other similar communities have done this. Melbourne, Orlando, Gary, Indiana, changed to Gary, Chicago. Manchester's airport in New Hampshire became Manchester, Boston, and that worked out very well for them. So given the competitive threat that this, uh, recently approved development in Manassas, Virginia, uh, has, has posed to us now, we need to act quickly to stand up and say, we at HDR are an existing certified commercial service airport and we, rather than Manassas, are the fourth DC-area airport.
I hate to interrupt, Neil, but you, would you explain that more about Manassas?
Hey, there's-
Unless that's later in the presentation.
It, it isn't, but I, I can, uh, share a little bit. So there is a private, uh, company known as AVports, which is headquartered in northern Virginia, and they seek out operations and maintenance contracts with airports around the country. They have about a dozen airports that they serve. I'm very familiar with this company because I worked at the Tweed New Haven Airport in Connecticut, which was managed by this company for the last 30 years. And they are backed by, um, funding from Goldman Sachs and what they will do is tell the community, uh, that they have the ability to invest large sums to build new terminals, expand terminals. And in exchange for that, they want long-term leasing arrangements and they promise to bring in often unnamed air carriers that will come in and set up shop and begin flying from that community. So in, in, in Manassas, I understand from the coverage, uh, they are promising to spend as much as $125 million and to convert that general aviation airport into a commercial service airport. Um, they're only 30 miles away from DC, but really when you look at drive time and travel time, they're not much closer than, than we are here in terms of time and distance to get to the city from that airport. Uh, so a radical transformation would have to take place. We don't know precisely what carrier it is. We suspect Avelo Airlines is, is the one seeking to partner with, uh, the city of Manassas there, but it looks to be that that is being approved by the city of Manassas and their council. And so we will have yet another airport in the region, uh, competing for the same, same travelers.
So are you suggesting we need to spend $100 million?
Uh, I'm suggesting that they don't need to spend $100 million when an existing airport is already here.
Because we'll need to compete with that.
They, they should call Hagerstown.
What you're getting at, you're saying they're going to spend all this money, we won't be in competition, though.
I think that they offer to spend all of that money to, um, attract the contract that they want. Uh, but when they have that, that area, that lease area, then they have the revenue opportunities.
So how do we compete with that money?
How do we compete with private investment like that? Well, we have Allegiant Airlines, so we're offering a different product and a different airline. We're going to offer the lowest cost and we're going to offer the best service and we're going to, as we previously discussed before this body, we're going to go to air service development, uh, uh, conventions and we're going to promote HDR and say, hey, uh, you should come to Ha- Hagerstown. And, you know, they have a long road ahead of them. They're going to, it's very ambitious to think that they can get all of that transformation done, the TSA approvals, the FAA approvals, and, and do that in 12 to 18 months, as they're telling people. So, um, great, claims are made to get the document signed, but then they'll have to deliver on all of that. And my only message to the airlines is that we're already here, we have the capacity, we have the staff and, and please consider us, we, we want to grow. You don't need to transform Hagerstown into a commercial service airport to support that growth, we are already there. So stakeholders will have to decide whether all that federal investment, the millions of dollars to bring TSA in, deal with additional traffic and noise, whether they want to do that down there in Manassas, whether it's necessary. I think it's redone- there in Manassas, whether it's necessary. I think it's redundant to what we have here. I would just like to step forward and say, hey, Hagerstown can serve us.
So you're basically saying they're spending that money to be like us. We're already there.
Correct, to get where we already are.
So how far is Manassas from Dulles International Airport?
Oh, it's, the way the crow flies, it's not very far at all. I would say perhaps 15, 20 miles away. Some have asked questions from an air traffic control perspective, how will that even work?
Farther out?
They're, yes, they're to the southwest of Dulles.
Southwest.
According to Google, 27 and 1/2 miles or 41 minutes. I'm sure that's based on draft time right now.
I know where you've jumped in here a little bit, and we're trying to go through the briefing, but you've said stakeholders a number of times. Please define for me who you're talking about. Is it Allegiant Airlines? Is it US Air? Is it, who are the stakeholders that you're talking about in terms of, when I see it in the written document, the stakeholders are concerned about X? The stakeholders are, are they all concerned about X? Is it a stakeholder? Is our stakeholder Allegiant? I'd like to understand who we say the stakeholders are.
Yeah, well, I think generally we have airport stakeholders, which could be a range. It could be the business owners that own an aviation business on the field. It could be-
But who are the ones that were consulted, that we're referencing here, the stakeholders say X?
Well, we did describe who participated in the process. So we've got staff input. We asked our AAC members to weigh in on this. A lot of this is feedback from the consultants, which helped prepare the report and have assisted other communities that are in a similar place as we are now. And increasingly, some of the things that were suggested by the strategic plan are just parroting things that Allegiant Airlines has said repeatedly to this local community over the last few years, that they would like us to follow the model of their other, that their other cities that they serve.
One other question before I get, we get back to this.
But wait, I'm sorry, but you didn't name any stakeholders yet. So individuals, there's a name for these individual stakeholders that said X.
Well, is there a specific question? Because we're talking about commercial services. It is Allegiant is the stakeholder group that primarily serves us. There's other ultra-low-cost carriers out there that you could name, and Neil referenced one of those that may be behind the curtain down at Manassas. Ultra-low-cost carriers operate under a different model than your legacy.
But are they the ones that you, that are providing this input? Is what I'm asking. And this goes into my next question, which is directly related to it. We talked about the MSA of Chicago area. I'm very familiar with Rockford Airport, and Allegiant flies in and out of there, and they have unsuccessfully tried to, they've articulated the same constructs that you have where Chicago, but they've not been able to do that. They've not been able to really change. But have you directly engaged with them or Gary, Indiana, to understand what they're doing and what their challenges are and how they've thought to overcome some of the similar problems?
From what I know of Rockford, it's a success story. It's just perhaps more of a tale in their case about their air cargo is tremendous.
Well, air cargo, yes.
Yeah, but they have a healthy amount of flights on Allegiant Airlines. We'd love to have the number of flights they have.
Are they branding themselves as Rockford Chicago Airport now?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that was a number of years ago. I think perhaps 10 or more years ago, they decided to do that, and I think it's very helpful that people who wouldn't otherwise know where Rockford is, you know, okay, it's the Chicago area, the Chicago region.
Okay.
But yeah, there is no impetus or driving force behind these changes that it's come down from an airline. This is largely staff-initiated, based upon what we know about the industry and how we can best position ourselves in terms of our brand and our marketing.
I do think it's worth mentioning, I mean, Allegiant is the carrier that we have, and so they have their own trajectory that they're working through, and they have their own business model. So when they originally provided service to the D.C.-area, Hagerstown was first, and since then, they've moved into Dulles and BWI. Now, in terms of their overall strategy, they look at us office as one geographic region because they won't let us compete in terms of destinations offered with those cities. So whether we like it or not, we are competing against those cities because, like the Orlando-Sanford flight is not one that they offer out of BWI or Dulles, but some of the other destinations that they have in those locations, if we make that request, it will not be granted because they don't want us competing directly.
They have 98% fill on their flights here? Is that correct?
The load factor is what we talk about in terms of percent occupied, and I could be wrong, but we are around 90% or so, which is, industry is 85, so you want to be above that, and then there's other factors that they look at as far as profitability. So it's not just, because they do dynamic pricing. So it's not so much just to say, well, the plane's full. It's the plane's full. How much did they sell those tickets for?
Yeah. We're up in the rankings within the Allegiant system. We're not down near the bottom. I mean, they're pleased with how we're filling the aircraft. Allegiant doesn't oversell, like the major air carriers do, where they now have to, you know, offer money to people to give up their seat because they sold more seats than they had on the plane. Allegiant doesn't do that.
I know you're trying to get through this briefing, but I want to clarify a couple of things. I think you're 100% correct on a westward migration of humans. I mean, I can tell you for sure, it's my business selling properties to people coming, and I'd say 80% of them have been coming from Montgomery and Frederick County this way in the past two or three years. I very rarely deal with local people anymore because the agents are bringing them from those counties east. So I think you're right there. I'm not quite sure of only one thing. I've lived this with you guys for three months in our advisory meeting, so I'm just clarifying it for public or whoever. And so your thoughts behind us, okay, we're, our employment is pretty good on Allegiant. So with all this potential proposed marketing, is this all in hopes of Allegiant increasing our flights by having a lot more business? Is it more trips maybe to Myrtle Beach or another destinations? Is this what, I mean, you can only put so many people on an airplane in the routes we're flying now. So we go to all this effort, and I'm just being devil's advocate here. What's your hope for that?
It's the hope that the airline would feel that if they made the investment of adding additional destinations, additional frequencies, that we would have the financial means of supporting those flights with the staff we need and the equipment we need in that. We're up to this task. We're not too small.
Overlap already Allegiant flights from those other airports. You said they're not competitive. These would be new destinations that the other locations don't have.
Well, it could be both. I'd be, you take a flight like St. Pete Clearwater, it runs nine months out of the year. So even extending that to 12 months would be an improvement. But I think the other thing, when you look at the why, as I mentioned, whether we like it or not, we are competing against BWI and Dulles on performance with Allegiant. And when you look at the airline industry as a whole right now, there's consolidation because they don't have enough flights, they don't have enough planes and pilots. We don't want to be in the situation where they look at us at some point and say, why are we dealing with HGR? We only have one year-round destination, two seasonals. We have these operational logistics. We have another airport to deal with. Just pull those flights to Dulles and be done with it. That's not the situation you want to be in. So you truly a case of, are you growing or you dying? You don't want to be just treading water in the middle, I think, is the other.
From what I've seen on TV, I don't know if I want to be associated with any of these other airports with the cancellation of flights, people screaming on the news every night. Do we really want to be?
No, and I think that's what we can sell is, is you don't have the complications at HGR that you do at a Dulles or Reagan or BWI. It's not as grueling and stressful of an experience. You can offer a service that they can't get. Allegiant or another carrier can't get that at those airports.
It's one of the positives of our airport, it's stress-free. We run in, right?
Correct.
It's hard to succeed. I think if you stand still, you can't stand still forever. You've got to keep moving forward if you, but I don't know how fast you move. That's my only question. So if you're bringing, so our hope, one of our big hopes is that that big population area starts coming here to fly at an easier route to wherever they're going instead of maybe, I mean, I've lived in Frederick, I'd come here to fly to Orlando. I wouldn't go to BWI probably because it's, you know, right now, it's comfortable. It's like Jeff was just saying, we don't want it to become uncomfortable. But we're hoping to attract with that the people coming here to fly out. Not as many people flying in unless they're returning. We got tourism, but, you know, do they fly in from who knows where? Do they fly in, they can maybe easy access to Smithsonian or something? I'm just trying to get it, all the pros and cons. So anyway, I'm done. Keep going.
No, as we'll say in our slides, in particular, marketing to our local area, but also to Frederick County, Maryland, Montgomery County, Maryland, and Loudoun County, Virginia. If we could get even part of that very big pie, people to, don't fight the traffic into the city, reverse the flow. It's a nice, easy drive to get up here and start and end your trip at Hagerstown. I think that's attractive. Any flights that Allegiant's willing to add to us, we will take. We just have to show that we have the ability to effectively market, we have the ability to scale up our operations should we need to, because we do provide the ground handling and firefighting and security, that we can continue to remain compliant with TSA and FAA regulations. As we move forward, even just to maintain what we already have now, we'll take more resources. But we want to show that we have ambitions to be a bit larger than we are now. We're not talking about a giant airport. And we don't want to get away from our core competencies of being a general aviation-friendly airport and a strong supporter of aircraft maintenance and repair businesses and all the valuable tenants that we have. We don't want to get away from that.
Neil, one last question then, at this point in time in the briefing. You, are we putting the cart before the horse, is what I'm wondering? Because you can't really market something you don't have. You don't have flights, you don't have options. This isn't really a destination, even thinking about for people coming from Florida to fly here to go and deal with the two and a half hours on 70 to get to downtown, maybe to get to Frederick, okay? So we're really not a destination, even if you try to market it, but you have to have, the airlines has to say, have to say first that this is, you have capacity here and, because you can't market something you don't have, right?
But I would say, I think we do have it. It's a matter of demonstrating that.
But we don't have flights.
Well, but that comes from Allegiant at this point, unless you go to another carrier. So some of it is demonstrating to them that you're capable and you can provide the service. They've been through this model before, and there are examples like, take Northeast Ohio. They started service at, they had service at Cleveland International, I believe, Youngstown, Ohio, and Akron. And one ended up happening is the cost to operate at Cleveland and those larger hubs is two expenses. So as an ultra-low-cost carrier, they don't want that. Youngstown was another, you know, mid-sized city in the area. They did service at a few flights. Wasn't enough for them to be successful. They moved their operation to Akron, Ohio, and they're doing quite well there. I don't know if they have a dozen or so flights. So again, Akron, Ohio isn't Cleveland, but if you want to fly Allegiant and you want to fly Northeast Ohio, that's where they've had their operation. It's somewhat similar to where they are with Flint, Michigan, Rockford, Illinois. They have a different model than the traditional carriers. And so we can do our best to present who we are, but again, ultimately, we can't control the airline strategies and how they view us.
Are they flying to Akron, or is it like here in Rockford, it's a hub to go to tourist areas in Florida and south?
It's both. I mean, when you look at our passengers here, it is people headed from here, south. But when you look at Allegiant's strategy and their own destination map, they have BWI as a destination. I don't know what percent goes in and out, but they are marketing the D.C.-area someplace that people want to come to for a trip. And even the travel time, it's something, as you know, with D.C.-Baltimore traffic, it depends on what time you plug that in. When we were at our Allegiant conference, as we were sitting there, I programmed the travel times from those airports to Washington, D.C. I think we were an hour and a half. BWI was an hour and 12 minutes, and Dulles was 52 minutes. And that doesn't even take into account getting from your gate, through security, bags, all these other things. So again, we may think we're remote, but when you look at the actual total travel time, it's changing that conversation to how long does it really take?
And our name and our branding really, it's not dependent upon our airline product. You know, they're general aviation airports that have no airline service at all, but if they have proximity to a big city, very often they include that big city name in their name. So it's not misleading or disingenuous to do that. You think about, there are other realms in which we compete. Sometimes folks have large business aircraft, and they can't get hangar space closer to the city. They'll be able to get that hangar space in an outlying airport at a lower price point. So it's just acknowledging where we are, and when we step forward and introduce ourselves and say, hey, just wanted you to know, because you probably didn't know, we happen to be in the Washington-Baltimore National Capital Region. That's where we hail from. That's what we want to do. We think it's a new, fresh brand. We think it's very positive, and I think it would be, you know, you never know what that might lead to in the future.
Let me just say, I appreciate the effort to update our branding. I like the logo in general. I think it's fine. I'm not completely sold in the idea of removing the name county, I have to say. On my recent vacation, I spent more time than I should have at the airport in Detroit, and it's even named the Detroit Metropolitan Wayne County Airport. I understand, and I absolutely agree with all of the statistics that we're getting more of a push westward into our county, more our community is growing and expanding, but I want to fight as hard as I can to make sure Washington County doesn't look like Washington, D.C., and I see those pressures all the time. I agree with the idea of if we could rebrand in some way, but keep the name updated, freshen our logo, that's not a bad idea. Continue to work with Allegiant, potentially other airlines that might want to come in and offer their services to other destinations. Maybe they're not the big cities of the United States that we fly directly to. That's okay. There's great places to see. I'd like to see our effort focus more on building those relationships, but I don't want to reinvent Washington County. We're proud of being the first county in the country named after George Washington, and I just, I don't want to see that slip away. My thoughts.
Thank you. Appreciate your insights. I definitely think whatever the decision is, we can always have some sort of clear representation on business cards and letterheads and other things that the airport is owned and operated by Washington County government, which is something we're all proud of. I just, you know, whether you think Washington, D.C., that reference is a bad thing or a good thing, opinions vary. But I think for consumers that are buying airline tickets, do they know where Hagerstown is? Hardly not. They know where Washington, D.C. is? Yes. And the number of people wanting to go to Washington, D.C. is numbered into millions every year. So if we hitch our wagon to that regional branding.
I would interject that your job is marketing to make that change. I agree with Commissioner Kiefer. I support all the information behind there, but I'm not going to be in agreement to taking Washington County off. And Wayne made a good example of the airport that he was at.
Well, before we move on, I just, right now, we don't have county in the name. It's Hagerstown Regional Airport. Previously, it was Washington County Airport, and that was problematic because there are already three Washington County airports in the country. There's one in Pennsylvania. There's 30 Washington Counties. So I agree, we are, we were Washington County 1776, even before Washington, D.C. came in existence. And it truly is, and we discussed this at the advisory meetings, the Washington name addition is to be a dual meaning. It's, we are owned by Washington County. We're here in Washington County. So in some ways, adding the county name to it, I think what you see up there is the county logo, and I think Neil's pointing, we can still use that in applications like that. But when it comes to the name, right now, we're Hagerstown Regional Airport. There's no reference of county. It's confusing to somebody when they're typing in Washington, if they're looking to come into the area to see Washington County, they're going to realize, well, that's not Washington, D.C. I don't know where Washington County is in Hagerstown. I see it as a limiting option in the future. I think we're all proud for Washington County and the resources that we have, and I think locally, that would still remain. But I think that was the intent of the name, is that you would have a wider appeal, so.
Once again, I'm okay with the rebranding, but without the Washington County name in it, I won't support the plan at all for that one issue.
What about adding Washington County?
You guys can make all the examples and arguments you want. That's my position on this.
So what's the projected cost for rebranding? And what's the actual, because you have to replace all your signage and everything? I'm just wondering about that. And is it really the branding issue that's the driving problem? Or is it, because I look at all the other concrete issues that are in this report that to me are the real substantive things that, you know, it seems like the easy thing as well. It's the name. It's the, you know, let's do better marketing. But I look at the backend and I worry that, you know, we have to have more substantive, you know, be able to address the substantive issues, you know, with airlines. And this can be part of the discussion. But again, is, are we putting the cart before the horse? And I, a lot of great work in here. I just need to digest it more, okay? And I don't know if we're taking a lot of time to get, if we're going to get through the whole thing. But could we, could we have more time to digest this and understand it? Maybe come back is my suggestion at this point. Because I don't think anybody's ready to make a vote on this.
I would, I'm, I understand where you're going with this. I get it with the Washington. And I also know that you have to do something. It's, I don't think it's a cart before the horse personally. I have to advertise to get business. I do it in my own life. If I don't advertise, I don't get business. So I think you got to advertise to get what you want. But if the commissioners want to postpone this, that's fine. I, I'm really not in a whole lot of disagreement with most of any of it. But, but that's up to the other four commissioners.
We have a suggestion by Commissioner Harvey to delay, bring this back at another time. I'll support that.
Yes, me too.
Okay. Yes, and I, you know, obviously, you know, I'm a frequent flyer on Allegiant. And I've been to five or six of the annual Allegiant conferences. And I understand the mindset and the identity of, that's needed here and the fresh update. But I think on behalf of all five of the commissioners, we'd like to take this under advisement a little bit, research this, ask additional questions. And, you know, and I know our holiday schedule here, the next couple of weeks with Mako and everything else, probably the end of, maybe a month out, the end of August, we bring this back before us. Is that, is that too late? Does that give you heartburn as far as?
I think from our perspective, it would be good to know what, what else do you want us to look into?
What I would like, Andrew, is, is, because I didn't even know that we're doing some of this until I saw it on the agenda last week and I read through, I got lots of notes in there. I would like to meet with, you know, you and Neil and get into a lot of the details I saw that I don't even want to bring up in, at this forum. And just understand the thinking and some questions about the data. Just, I'll schedule a few hours if it's needed to, so I can get comfortable with the foundation that has led to the conclusions and the recommendations. Because I think it's a lot of good work and I'm, I'm not opposing anything. I just want to understand it better. And I don't think I can get there at this point in time, even if we spent another 45 minutes right now.
I, for one, am always available. I'd like to have an in-person meeting, telephone call. Happy to discuss any, I'll come out to the airport, yeah.
Okay, that's, we'll be in touch. We'll put this on, back on the schedule on a later date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is contract award 1627 Intervention in Case Management for Youth of Incarcerated Parents in Washington County.
Good morning. Rick Curry, Director of Purchasing.
Good morning. Michael Phillips, Grant Manager, Office of Management.
So before you use contract award PUR 1627 Intervention in Case Management for Youth of Incarcerated Parents, recommended motion move to award the contracted services to the responsible proposer with the responsive proposal, Homey Case Management Services Incorporated. For Hagerstown, Maryland, amount of $90,000 services to provide to fulfill the requirements of the county's community partnership agreement with the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth and Victim Services. Services are performed during the contract period that commence upon contract execution and end on June 30th, 2024, with option by the Office of Grant Management to renew the awarded contract up to two additional years through 2026. You can see the committee office serves on the coordinated committee. We had to advertise the RFP as we are required by law in the local newspaper and on the various websites. You see the number of individuals who download the document. We do have funding in the amount of $90,000, the concurrence from the coordinated committee. And also you have an excerpt from the RFP on the scope of work that the provider is to perform. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion second to approve is submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is bid award 1631 Wine Brenner Waste Water Treatment Sewer Line Relocation. Rick, good morning.
Again, Rick Curry, Director of Purchasing.
Mark Rachel, Director of Environment Management.
Subject is bid award PUR 1631 Wine Brenner Waste Water Treatment Plant Sewer Line Relocation. Recommendation to move the project for the Wine Brenner Sewer Line location to the sponsor responsible bidder, Henson &amp; Sons Incorporated, Hagerstown, Maryland, who submitted the lowest total sum bid in amount of $57,403.91. Basically, they'll be installing two 48-inch diameter precast manholes and 104 linear feet of 8-inch piping. Project is to be completed within 45 days. There are liquidated damages if it's not completed within that timeframe. As required by law, we had advertised a bid on, within the local newspaper and on various websites. And we did receive three bids indicated on the tabulation. And we do have funding in the department's CIB account. Questions?
One real quick question. And this isn't just on this one, but in general, do we track the record of actual performance of contractors that submit bids? So over time, we have an idea if we have issues or quality control differences, delivery differences, so that we can, and that becomes a qualitative factor in assessing the bid? Because I've yet to see a qualitative characterization here about anybody.
We do. If we have issues, we have the user department and we do bring the vendors in. And that becomes part of the file within the office. If we have performance issues, we would make that recommendation, informing the board that we would not recommend this bidder because of performance issues.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign, five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Washington County Veterans Advisory Committee Revision to Bylaws. Good morning, Zachary.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Teresa, good morning.
Zachary Kiefer, Assistant County Attorney.
Teresa Spruil, Washington County Advisory Committee Chair.
What we're presenting before the board today is a proposed revision to the bylaws of the Washington County Veterans Advisory Committee. The current makeup of the board provides for nine board seats for voting members with two non-voting ex officio members. I know I laid out some of the, or the current roster of the board. I'll jump down to what the committee's requesting in the amendments. And they're requesting that the number of board members be increased to 11. And there is a bit of a typo in the agenda report form. That's 11 voting members retaining one non-voting member. That the amendment would also, it would remove the Maryland Department of Veterans Affairs representative and the representative from the director of, or excuse me, the Health Department Director and increase the number of honorably discharged service members from four to seven is sort of the highlights here. And Teresa's here to provide the board justification for that as well.
So at this point, the Maryland Department of Veterans Affairs representative position has never been filled. That individual is not a county resident and has never had a desire to serve on that board. When we originally put the committee together, that position was actually vacant. The county health department individual has been present at times and not at times. And as a non-voting member, I don't think has a lot of buy-in to that position. We're hoping to have the 11 voting members. It gives us a little bit better quorum. It gives us more input from the county. It also gives us more individuals to work within county resources and in the county population to identify those things that members of our county need from the veterans' perspective. But we feel that it's actually only increasing the membership of the board by one and it is increasing the voting membership. So we think that this is a good option for us and that it will be helpful to us to move forward.
I agree. And, you know, thanks for all your work. And I'm the commissioner representative and I had a motion to approve this.
Second.
Any other discussion? Other veterans comments, Randy?
No, I think they do a good job. Teresa, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, motion is second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you.
Commissioners, before I leave, I would like to bring three things to your attention. When I was here last, you would like some updates. I have sent out some information about Operation Hope, which is a mobile food bank targeting veteran population in the county. And it's working in conjunction with St. Mark's Food Bank. Flyers have been distributed and we're continuing to help promote that for them. Also, the Veterans Administration is promoting and doing SAVE training, which is a veteran suicide prevention program. The VFW and the Masonic Lodge will be hosting that event in September. The American Legion will be doing one in October or November. And lastly, I'd like to remind all of you that the 70th anniversary of the Armistice in Korea, the Korean War veterans will be having a ceremony at 11:00 AM on Saturday at their monument. So encourage the public to attend. And the, I understand that Mrs. Hogan will be attending.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time today.
Thank you. Best for last.
Good morning.
Good morning, Leslie. How are you?
Hey, good morning.
Faces of farming.
Yeah, but I got something first. I just want to share with you, coming off of fair week, Ag Expo and Fair was last week. Huge, huge success again this year. You know, we always hold the fair during the hottest time of the year. And I think we were right on target with that, like we always do. Just FYI, next year's fair will be July 13th to the 20th, 2024. I just want to tell you that we had over 225 animals sold at the market sale. And there were 90 youth exhibitors. That was the kids selling their animals. And the gross sales are right now at 350,000. We anticipate that that'll fluctuate, go up and down a little bit. So that's absolutely incredible. I also want to tell you that over 35,000 people attended the events held at the fair that week. An additional, now that's track proceeds. An additional 10,000 to 15,000 people attended everything else that was the carnival rides. You know, they didn't necessarily go to a track event. So those numbers are all starting to come together now. I hope to have an economic impact for you in the next couple of weeks as the numbers continue to come in. But again, the Ag Expo and Fair was another huge success. And thank you for your support, as you always do for the fair. I do have to tell you.
Leslie, if you don't mind for a second, I, you know, on behalf of the commissioners and please the rest of you jump in here. The amount of effort and volunteer, and I know we mentioned it here earlier this morning, but while we're specifically on the agricultural community, Faces of Farming, the input and the effort and dedication and, I mean, moving the animals in and out, taking care of the animals when it's 100 degrees out and just on and on and on is just, I don't know, probably unique to Washington County.
It is. It is. It's absolutely unique. You know, that whole Ag Expo and Fair runs, takes about $200,000 to $250,000 to put on that event. It is completely run by a nonprofit and they are all volunteers, all volunteers. They are the backbone of that Ag Expo and Fair. And they do so much, you know, they move the animals out after the market sale at night while the kids are asleep. There's so many things that they do that you don't think about that just happen. And, you know, it's an incredible, incredible group of people. And I'm very proud to be part of them.
And cleanup's a big deal.
Oh, my. That's an understatement.
It's a real big deal.
Yes, it is.
Something else there, you know, the emotional support for the kids that have worked with those animals, you know, for what, a year? And after the sale, they're hauled off to the market and it's.
I'm one year set where the kids are when they come out of the show ring. And I ended up hugging all of them. And I thought, oh, I can never sit there again because I just cried nonstop the whole way through. Because it is, it's very emotional for the kids. The older kids do better. We had about nine seniors this year that, you know, this is their last year in the fair and the young ones are coming on. It's just absolutely wonderful. So again, thank you for attending and being part of that. But I am here today, Leslie Hart, Washington County Department of Business and Economic Development, to bring you again, another edition of Faces of Farming. You know, I'm not going to go over the numbers. I'm going to try to keep you on schedule. But we have over 900 farms, probably closer to 1,000 at this point. And we are the largest industry in Washington County agriculture. So today, I have two amazing farms to show you. One is Irwin Farm at Prospect Hill. It is a lavender farm located in Knoxville. And then the second one is Doodle Flower Farm, and that's located in the Boonsborough area. So PR, if you can roll that beautiful footage.
Hi, I'm Amy Walsh and this is Doodle Flower Farm in Boonsborough, Maryland. The farm here, we have a little over 10 acres and I grow lots of annuals, lots of perennials. I have a cart that I sell from out in the yard and I'm at two markets, Boonsborough and Williamsport. I also have three goats, one in milk that I'm making cheese and several chickens. And of course, the doodles, Thelma and Louise. Larry and I lived in Westminster. Our kids grew up and moved away. We were looking for a second chapter, wanted a piece of land with lots of space and close to the road so people could see us. And I visited a flower farm in Westminster and just fell in love with the concept. We moved to Washington County in 2019 in the winter. People are wonderful here. The farmers are, I love watching the farmers. They are the hardest workers in the world. We absolutely need to support our local farmers. That's where the farmer's market comes in. I've made friends at the farmer's market, both customers and the fellow farmers. I've had an engagement in the field. I have photographers come out and take pictures. My personal favorite are the dahlias. They are started indoors and then moved out in May. They're just a beautiful flower. My mother grew dahlias and they've always been a favorite of mine. Larry and I just feel like we're home here. It's been a wonderful fit for us.
My name is Heather Irwin. This is Irwin Farm at Prospect Hill, and we grow lavender. We have a little less than nine acres here. We have almost 1,000 lavender plants and they're all phenomenal and sensational. The most of them are phenomenal, though. My husband worked in Leesburg. We lived in North Carolina. So we figured, he commuted, so we figured it was time to move. We didn't necessarily want to live in Leesburg, so we increased the radius. We found Washington County. We researched the schools and came out and saw this place that had sat empty for a couple of years and it looked like a good project, a good place to raise the kids.
Well, when we first started, we were planting fruit trees. We planted about 50 different fruit trees and the deer ate everything in sight. So what we learned is that the deer do not eat lavender.
So initially, we thought we could plant lavender around whatever we decided our crop to be. And then we just thought, well, let's see if we can do anything with just the lavender. And that's what we did. We did a test plot. We did a test plot, made some products out of it. It was very well received, so we planted the whole field. So it has a very short bloom cycle. It's about a month. If you want to dry it, you need to pick it pretty much before it blooms. Then if you want to distill it, it doesn't really matter. So we are going to pick it this weekend, we'll distill part of it, and then we'll dry the rest of it for sachets, that kind of thing, and bundles. And when we distill it, we use the oil. We make lotion and spray and lip balm and soap, that kind of thing, with the lavender oil. We have a website. It's irwinfarms.com. We also have it in some local stores. We have it in Josie's in Boonesboro. We have it in Bushel and Peck in Charles Town. We have it at Inspired Chaos in Berkeley Springs.
We have a Pick Your Own Lavender event, and it's an opportunity for everyone in the public to come visit us, visit the farm, pick lavender, enjoy themselves, and we always enjoy meeting new people and just giving everyone just a great experience. I would say agriculture is very important, and what I've always learned is no farms, no food. And over time, farms become neighborhoods, and you never get it back to farmland. So it's important for us to always remember to preserve our farms, and even although we're not growing food itself, we're still farming, and I think that's important.
Leslie, who did the video for this? Who, who did the video for this?
One Room Media, Jamie Lawrence.
Okay, One Room Media, okay. I was wondering if it was Daniel's team or anybody?
Uh, no, they, they're the ones that put it on, the video portion. They load it to YouTube for us. They also put it on our website. The nice thing about Faces of Farming, these then become the property of the farmer. They can also take and use them in any kind of marketing.
The One Room Video is located?
Um, he works out of his house in Sharpsburg.
Sharpsburg? Okay, great.
Yep, yep. And I'm filming this week. If you'd like to join and meet him, I can send in a sketch. Thank you. Have a great closed session.
Thank you, Leslie. Thanks. Okay. Okay. Motion second in favor. Five-minute recess.